I wonder if they need us to be talking so they can test the sound.
A good point you bring up.
Otherwise, it's just dead air.
It looks, might look good, but not sound good, so.
I've got a face for radio, it's fine.
It's very generous. I could read from today's paper.
Okay, guys, we're back live again.
Good.
All right, Ms. Parker, let me know when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are ready, it appears. If you can just give me one second so that I can double-check and ensure that we're good to go. We have a number of public comments this evening. I would like to, before we begin with public comment note for council, we received approximately sixty written public comments to our public comment email box as of the deadline. We did check it just a little bit late to ensure that if there are a few stragglers, we could get them. I do want to, just for the, for the sake of the audience listening and anybody who submitted a public comment with a request to read that public comment aloud, that our protocols for the written comments submitted to the public comment mailbox are that we will attach those written comments exactly as written to the public packet and submit them to the city council in time for them to review those comments before the start of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to have their voice heard in their own voice is welcome to call our public comment voicemail. It allows up to a five-minute message, and the number for that public comment voicemail is three zero three seven zero six three one one one. Anyone who also wants to give public comment live during the meeting can contact the City Clerk's office at cityclerk@cityofwestminster.us and request to be sent a link to speak live during the meeting. We did receive sixty public comments that were attached to the packet and forwarded to the city council. And at this time, we also have a number of voicemails that were left on our public comment voicemail box. And Matt Williams will be queuing those up for you at this time. Matt, are you ready?
Hi, my name is Charlie Lander. I am a new citizen of Westminster. Moved here back in October two thousand nineteen from Broomfield. I live at nine seven six five Quay Loop. Cell phone is seven two zero eight seven eight six zero one five. I'm calling in regards to the current water rates that were set by the city. Coming from Broomfield, I was shocked when I recently started getting my water bills this summer. That's when I started looking into the tier rate structures. And if you haven't seen, I'm the one who has created the water rate comparison sheet that has been going around. I sent it to several council members, basically detailing our rates compared to other neighboring cities. The document I put together included thirteen other neighboring cities around Westminster. And I also did an example calculation of five thousand and thirty thousand gallon consumption for a single month. The thing that's frustrating is that we as citizens understand the need to have upgraded infrastructures. We understand the infrastructure is aging and to need to either upgrade it or build some new infrastructure. We also understand the need for the importance of conservation. Water is a very precious resource. We understand all those things. The response by the city that states that every city has a different structure is just, quite frankly, tone deaf, in my opinion. Because if you look at the water rate comparisons, it's not like we're just two to five percent higher than every other city. We are several hundred percent higher in some cases, but on average, between fifty and eighty percent more expensive than any other neighboring city. And every city surrounding Westminster has the same aging infrastructure, has the same population growth as the city of Westminster. So how can the city explain the current rate structure? I think the citizens are owed an explanation for why the rates are what they are. We need to see a detailed budget sheet of explaining where the money is going. And since we have the most expensive water rates in the Denver metro area, we need to see what are we getting for those high rates? We don't even have the cleanest water around the Denver metro area. How is it that the city of Broomfield can have a flat rate of three dollars and twenty-eight cents for any usage? Where we go up to twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents? How is it that the city of Boulder can have rates in the five dollars in their third tier, but yet we are twelve eighty-eight? We need some justification. And I don't understand how we can have the highest water bill in the state, and we also have the highest paid city manager. Is that a coincidence? I'm not so sure. So I don't think that our city manager, Don Tripp, should be paid what he's being paid, considering how we're mismanaging the funds, especially our water. So I vote no confidence in Don Tripp, and we need some answers on our water. Thank you.
Kevin Scott, a vote of no confidence for city manager, Don Tripp.
My name is Jana Railsack. I'm calling in regards to Don Tripp. I want you to know, and I want you to play this message in the public records. I have no confidence in Don Tripp. I've had multiple issues with him. He has a very, very poor attitude every time I've dealt with him in public or during a meeting. And I do not feel he is in the best interest for the people of the city of Westminster. Don Tripp needs to go, and he needs to take his attitude with him. Thank you.
Yes, this is Joyce Bachman. I want to record my vote of no confidence in city manager, Don Tripp. We are senior citizens who built our home twenty-five years ago when the city of Westminster had strict restrictions on keeping our yards beautiful. The actions of the city will have a detrimental effect on our communities because nobody will want to live in the city when they know our water bills are three and four times what it is in other surrounding cities. Our water bills in the summer have been high, but our last bill was eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, which is shameful. We are all suffering while Don Tripp is making an exorbitant salary.
This Frank Daryl Cooper, and I think this water is outrageous. I do not trust Don Tripp, and I think he needs to be gone. We need, we need somebody that cares about the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Ann Carlo. I just am calling in to give a vote of no confidence in city manager, Don Tripp. His attitude is unprofessional, I've heard from multiple sources. And also, just the fact that he can't control the water situation while in the city council. So vote of no confidence. We need to get him replaced with somebody who actually knows what they're doing and is actually acting on behalf of the citizens of the city of Westminster. Just, quite honestly, this council and city manager has gone amok, and that's what I'm hearing all over the place. So there it is. Thank you. Bye.
Yes, my name is Dana McCoy, and I want to vote no confidence in the city manager, Don Tripp. I have lived in this house for thirty-five years. My water bill this month was over three hundred and eighteen dollars. I realize that the cost of water has increased, but this is ridiculous. For those of us that have lived in these homes for as long as I have, maybe you guys should have considered grandfathering us in. We have a very large corner lot with a third of my house being rocks, and my water bill is still that high. This is close to like a mortgage. Anyhow, I think you guys should reconsider what this is doing to our neighborhood and the financial strain it's putting on our residents. Again, I vote no confidence in city manager, Don Tripp. Thank you.
Hi, this is Dan Weaver. Calling today, my wife and I, Melana Weaver. Just the vote of no confidence, no confidence for the city manager, Don Tripp, for the following discrepancies, we think. Massive rezoning and high-density building, which residents do not want. A very costly fifteen-year downtown revitalization, revitalization project, which is still not complete and has added nothing to the community other than a movie theater and more unwanted high-density housing. Costly water sewer infrastructure replacement due to the new builds. The banning of trailer boats on Stanley Lake, while at the same time raising residents' water rates to pay for the above cited infrastructure. As said before, Don Tripp has been one of the, has been one in which he does not listen to the citizens and taxpayers, but instead issues, instead uses us to implement, educate, and promote his own ideology and vision, which has resulted in the largest quality of life decline in our city has ever had. We absolutely have no confidence in Don Tripp, and it's time for him to go. We need someone who has invested our community, community full-time. Someone who lives here full-time, someone who understands the city manager should work for the people, not the other way around. Thank you.
My name is Debbie Peter. I would like this message played for, during the meeting tonight. I would like this to go into permanent record, public record. I vote no confidence in Don Tripp in managing the city. Water rates are outrageous. They were calculated for a wetter climate, not a dry climate. So I vote no confidence for mismanagement of our water and utility system. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Kelly Lidle. I live in the city of Westminster. I have lived in the city since nineteen eighty-three, and what I have seen happening in the last five, seven years is not what city Westminster was. These water rates that you are shoving down our throats are uncalled for, unrealistic, and are not, do not deserve to be put on us. People's yards in city Westminster are just going to turn brown and die. It's going to create an unwanted and desirable place to live. Why would somebody want to buy my house with my water rates when they can live in one of the surrounding cities with safer, lower utilities? You guys are building a bunch of apartment complexes that are increased traffic on side streets that are not desired, designed to be holding that much traffic. You have not done this at all. You're just building, building, building. I hope you have given consideration to increasing the police and fire fund to help keep our neighborhoods safe. There is a elementary, Simper Elementary on Old Wadsworth, that if that is an apartment complex going in at Church Ranch Boulevard, and the additional children that may be walking up to Simper have no viable walking or bike trail up there. There is nothing between Ninety-Eighth Avenue and Ninety-Sixth Avenue. It's a steep, narrow road with no shoulders at all. Not safe for children. You guys have not represented the citizens of city Westminster or the city in the way it used to be. I have no confidence in Don Tripp or the city council at this moment. Thank you.
My name is Kristi, middle initial J, Patrick. And I request this be read aloud at the September fourteenth, twenty-twenty city council meeting during public comments and entered into the public record. I want my vote of no confidence in the city manager, Don Tripp, to be recorded into the record. I feel the fiscal management of the city of Westminster, the favoritism shown to certain council members, and total disrespect for other council members should not go unnoticed or challenged. I feel that information that affects the citizens of Westminster for whom he supposedly works for and represents is parceled out only to a few and results in disparate discriminatory treatment. His actions, treatment of certain council members is demeaning and embarrassing. His current salary is higher than other neighboring city managers by several thousand dollars, and those cities have higher populations than Westminster. For him to have a total disregard and disdain for some council members is inexcusable against all human resource professional standards. Thus, my vote of no confidence. In addition, I am very unhappy about the current water rates and the failure to adopt a gradual increase, which was one of the options. The Westminster City Edition stated, and I quote, "And thanks to the long-term professional management of our city's finances, we are able to fully fund our water and sewer system needs without raising rates for twenty-twenty-one," end of quote. This is fake news because you were considering raising the rates again before the COVID pandemic hit. If this city was so professionally managed, our senior citizens would not have to decide between food, medicine, or water. An elderly neighbor confided that his son is bringing him water for his CPAP machine from a neighboring city. Our neighborhoods are forced to eliminate landscaping care to afford basic life water needs. The dying laws are negatively affecting all of our property values. People are choosing to relocate to Broomfield where they have a flat rate system that offers water at considerable less cost. What is Broomfield doing that Westminster, Westminster isn't when it comes to water? In addition, suspending the increase in water rates was voted down in a city study council session. So again, I want this read into the public record. My name is Kristi Patrick, and this is a vote of no confidence in city manager, Don Tripp. In addition, it includes certain council members, Catherine Spully, Anita Seitz, John Vogt, and Herb Atchison. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Don McCarthy. I've been a Westminster resident for thirty years, calling to put in a vote of no confidence against Don Tripp. I think we need some new thoughts, some new leadership, different ways of looking at things. I don't think he's done a good job in terms of communicating, in terms of being open to different ideas. I think it's time to make a change. He's had plenty of time in the city. Really, really, we need a change. Again, this is Don McCarthy and city of Westminster resident for thirty-plus years. Thank you.
Hi, this is Liz Harshman. I'm a Westminster citizen. I'm voting, or I'm not voting, I'm asking for a vote of no confidence in city manager, Don Tripp, be played during your public comments. It's regarding our water bills. I mean, we have got so many signatures that I'm seeing, all the neighbors I talked to. I would like the rates rolled back, but the only way we can do it is to vote everybody out. If you could please do something about this, it would be greatly appreciated. I have neighbors on social security, and there are people from church and everywhere chipping in just to pay their water bill. I'm having to work overtime to pay mine. This is incredible. I know people in Federal Heights, their water bill is forty dollars per month. Mine, watching my water and burning up my grass, is at a hundred and sixty. Last year, it was a two hundred. I can't do it anymore. I'm either going to have to move or something, so I would appreciate any help with all of this. Thank you.
Hi, this is Kathy Huff calling. I live at nine three eight zero Salisbury Circle, and I would like my comments read into the city council meeting tonight. I'd like to express my position of no confidence in Don Tripp, the city manager. From my perspective, it appears that council has given him a blank check to do whatever projects he favors and at whatever cost. This lack of budgeting and overspending is being put squarely on the backs of property owners in our city. The water bill is just one facet that's being affected. Personally, our water bill was three hundred and fifteen dollars last month compared to two hundred and ten during the same period last year. As an aside, I did notice that consumption for the same period last year is no longer available on the website. Is that by design? In the city budget, it says the increase would add thirty-two dollars a month for a high-water user family of three with an average-sized yard. We are a family of two with an average yard, and it increased more than three times that. And that's assuming the worst-case consumption, which I doubt. I also noticed that city has been vocal about not raising water rates in the next two years because of the availability of refinancing debt of a low rate, but very quiet about raising them this year anyway. I submit to you that low rates have been available for quite some time. And if this is a fix, it should have been done proactively to prevent this year's increase in the first place. The city must live within its budget, just the same as individuals have to. To do otherwise is not taking your fiduciary responsibility seriously. Also, Mr. Tripp's salary seems to be quite excessive in comparison to other Colorado municipalities. Research I have done shows average, average city manager salaries nationwide at ninety-three thousand three seventy-three and shows one percent of manager positions earn up to two hundred and fifteen thousand six twenty-one. Why is our city paying Mr. Tripp approximately thirty percent more than what the top one percent of city managers make? From what I can tell, he's the highest-paid city manager in the Denver metro area. I've noticed that he seems to communicate one-on-one about council matters, mostly only with those counselors that would agree with his position, leaving the rest of the council in the dark. And now we're paying a communication professional ten thousand dollars to teach our managers and counselors to talk to one another? It seems like a slam dunk that we all learned in kindergarten and a huge waste of taxpayer money. It's council's job to communicate with each other openly and fairly and in the best interest of our city, not individual pet projects handled behind closed doors. It seems to me that conversations should all be done with all counselors at the same time, around the same table, so that there's not miscommunication and no perception of favoritism or cronyism and back for men, so that everyone is working toward the common goal of running our city responsibly. Downtown Westminster seems to be a pet project that does not make much fiscal sense. It is encouraging high occupancy that we do not have the water and other infrastructure to eat. Rather than live within the constraints of our revenues, it's passed anyway, and we'll figure out how to pay for it after we pass it mentality. Does that sound familiar? And again, it lands on the back of weasel-oly taxpayers to foot the bill. If it's my money that I want to say and how it's being spent, that's the purpose of my testifying today. I noticed that an increase in staff is again budgeted for. With the COVID changes and many employees still working from home and not putting in forty hours of work each week, it does not seem like a good idea at all to increase staffing nor give wage increases. Private businesses have to live within those constraints. The city should as well. Just because it's budgeted doesn't mean it can't be scaled back and has to be spent. This, just because you can, doesn't mean you should approach this warranted here. I feel it's long overdue that our budgeting and staffing needs a good hard look instead of a blank check, starting with Mr. Tripp's management methods and his salary. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, this is Babette Hunstad. I'm a Westminster resident and voter. I have no confidence in city, city manager, Don Tripp, have dealt with him in the past, and they have an agenda, and it's special interests, developers, and so forth. It is not about the people of Westminster. Our bill has gone up astronomically for our water. We are double what other districts are in Colorado and triple some. I mean, this is ridiculous, and you are not listening to the people. You need to bring the water rates down, and we need people who represent. You need to bring the water rates down, and we need people who represent the interests of the residents in Westminster, not people who want to make money by building in Westminster. Don't think I'm anti-building. I'm not. Development and building happens, but it should not happen at the cost of the residents. That is wrong.
Mr. Mayor, this is city clerk Michelle Parker. That concludes all of the voicemails that were received in the public comment voicemail box by the deadline, and I can also confirm that we did not receive any requests from a member of the public to join the meeting and offer testimony live.
Okay, thank you. That wraps up our public comment portion of the council meeting tonight. We'll move on to the report of the city officials. Mr. Tripp?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have a couple of things I'd like to mention this evening. First of all, let me mention that tomorrow we'll be publishing and providing to you a copy of the proposed 2021 budget. I want to thank you for allowing us to move that budget cycle a bit later to allow us to have another month or so to look at the situation of revenues. And we know that our revenues are declining. This has been a difficult budget year, and I want to make sure everybody understands that by charter, this budget that will be provided on the website and provided to council tomorrow, this is my recommended budget, and it's not the final work. It's the beginning of the process, and the council, you'll have a chance to work on that this Saturday and begin to provide some feedback. So again, thank you for that, and I wanted our citizens to know that it's open for them to take a look at and provide feedback. Related to, you know, the, all of the comments, and I've read everything that came in, and I've listened to the comments by folks, and I just, you know, there are so many things that I'd like to say, but I think maybe the most important thing tonight is we've provided a lot of answers to questions people have had about issues in the utility and water rates. I just want to say tonight that I respect the process of public feedback that we have, and I think it's terrific with people that are unhappy with this, they've taken advantage of that. I want to tell all of you folks and everybody moving forward that we look forward to that continuing as we study this further. In October, we're going to begin another process of looking and rebuilding blocks around what's necessary in the utility. We've done this with previous councils, and I think it's going to be helpful for everybody to see that work, and I want you to know that we're open-minded and that we, as we move forward, we want to make sure everybody is fully informed. I have to admit that hearing all of this is very hard because I love this city, and I've given my heart and soul, and I just tell you that I've worked hard to be a good city manager. My job is to work with the staff to accomplish council's goals on behalf of the city. That's the job of the city manager, is to take those goals and to try to put them into place. Although I'm not from here, and I've only been here eight years, I bought a house shortly after moving here within the first six months, and this is my home. Thank you for an opportunity to comment this evening.
Move on to the council for any comments, but before I open it up to the council, I wanted to update everyone who's on the phone listening. We've had a number of issues that have been popping up over the last few weeks in regard to our future in transit. We had a lot of conversations coming out of the board of directors from RTD. We've had some disturbing comments made by some board members about the future of RTD and our mass transit systems. This week, this past week, the Northwest Mayors, the Metro Mayor's Conference, a number of organizations, as well as a number of mayors out of the Adams County area, have all sent letters to RTD in regard to the Fast Track Internal Savings Account that is currently in place to help put money aside for the completion of the unfinished transit corridors along the N Line, which goes from Denver Union Station up through Thornton and eventually in Segment Two would go all the way to Highway Seven. The first segment of that one, which is approximately two and a half years behind schedule, is scheduled to open up on September the 21st for Segment One. The remaining three corridors are the B Line coming from Denver Union Station up through Westminster, Brumfield, Lewisville, LaMonte, Boulder, currently scheduled for a potential completion in 2050. We also have two other spur lines in the southern part of the city that are still yet to be finished. Through this FISA account, the Fast Track Savings Account, the account the board of directors from RTD are currently considering taking that $120 million and putting it into operational funding. The letters objecting to the removal of that have already gone into RTD, but we are more concerned even by comments by some of the board members in a public announcement where they were recorded on Channel Nine at least, indicating that they want to consider also going back to the legislature from 2004 to discontinue the completion of the remaining corridors. Now, this is under state statute that the vote would be required to go back. The citizens of Westminster and everything north of I-70, along with the rest of the metro area, have been paying tax money into RTD to complete a transit system in the metro area. In order to finish that, we need to continue to develop along the lines. We need to continue to pay into the funds to do that. To present time, that's not available to us due to the financial situation that RTD finds himself in. We will continue to keep the citizens advised of the recourse that we have asked them not to take this money out of the FISA account. We will also do everything in our power not to allow them to undo the legislation from 2004 and not complete the Fast Track system in the Denver area. Mass transit and transit systems are a part of what we need here as we have a growing economy and a growing population in the entire Denver metro area. So we will keep you advised if things change. Again, these letters have all gone in asking them to not move the FISA accounts. There were four members of the board, that all four of those are represented on the areas north of I-70 that voted against this move from the funds. There were nine who voted in favor of it. The final decision will still be coming forward at a future board meeting, but we have tried to encourage them not to move this forward. We will keep you advised. At this time, I'll open it up to any comments we have from the council. Mr. Council Demond?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report in that this last week I attended the inclusivity board, and that board is working on their annual retreat, and so they had been talking about whether or not they were going to do that virtual or in-person, and the group decided that they were going to be hosting a virtual one. So that planning is their, the board and staff is supporting them and planning that so that they can work on their goals moving forward into the new year and making sure that, you know, they have a strategic plan that they still aligns with what their mission is. So that was exciting to hear that they're going to be moving forward with that. Lastly, I just wanted to at least take a minute and mention that this last Friday was the 19th anniversary of the September 11th attacks that happened on our country where many thousands of people lost their life. I want to just remember them and also recognize the many, many men and women of both law enforcement and fire service that rushed into those buildings to save citizens and many who perished trying to save other people. I think it's a good reminder of what our first responders do across this country to protect citizens. They do a very thankless job, and I appreciate what the job that they do. And so I wanted to take a minute to show my gratitude and thank them for that job they do and remember those that were lost on September 11th, 2001. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to talk a little bit about RTD. I know that you had mentioned something to the Westminster Chamber of Commerce today earlier in your interview with them. There has been furloughs already. There are more coming next year, and it will be a tiered process. As far as layoffs, that is also in discussion. And so, yes, it is a hardship for not only RTD but for us, the city of Westminster. But also, my understanding from a staff perspective is that staff is recommending that the $120 million that is there will retain as $120 million in FISA. It's the money that is supposed to build up that account that is proposed to go towards operation. So the $120, as far as I understand, shall remain in the FISA account, but it's the buildup process that they're requesting to go to operational procedures. With that, I also wanted to thank all who have called in for your concerns. I'm listening to them. I'm hearing them. I'm also seeing them come in with our public comments. And I just wanted to read a couple, just a few that have come. Some people don't know that their emails cannot be, or that our policy is that it's not going to be read. I know that they had requested that it be read aloud, but I wanted to use my voice as part of theirs since that's what we are elected to represent is their voice. So I'm just going to take a few minutes and read a couple along the same lines that the voicemails have voiced, so you'll see a theme in this. I request this-
Ms. Smith, before you do, I will remind you that city clerk sent us that this is not part of our protocol to read these into the record.
I understood it as staff protocol, not council protocol, so I'd like to read-
Let me just clarify before you do, Mr. Frankel. Can you clarify this so we're not getting out of sync?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one moment. Thank you. The protocols are the council protocols, and as Ms. Parker has indicated, obviously, written materials become part of the record. Citizens are absolutely invited for up to five minutes of comment at the council meetings, and those are read into the record by the citizens' voice themselves. And as far as the minutes of the meeting, the minutes of the meeting then summarize the verbal comments that are offered at our meetings. So I just wanted to remind that Ms. Parker's message to council, in fact, does address this. And so the protocol is essentially that five-minute verbal comments are available to those who wish to be heard, as are the opportunity to submit written comments, which will actually be accepted into the packet as Parker has done tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. I don't quite know if that cleared it up. I understood council to have 10 minutes to update on record or discuss what they wish to have it published as heard. Some people don't read the packet, so if I have 10 minutes allotted to me, am I able to read just some emails that have been coming in?
You're absolutely correct. Council members get 10 minutes for their council comments this evening, but I just wanted to make it known, at least from Ms. Parker and my perspective, that the protocol is as far as accepting written comments and ensuring that they are part of the record. But absolutely, council members have up to 10 minutes, so you're correct.
Okay. Then I will use my remaining time, if no one objects, to-
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I request this email to be read aloud. Dear Council, City Council, as a 15-plus-year citizen of Westminster, I'm voting no confidence in city manager Don Tripp. Issues at hand, the water rate increase doubled my bill, and the city is not doing enough to protect its citizens against increasing theft, break-in, and crime. Sincerely, Monica McKee. We request this email to be read aloud. No vote of confidence in city manager Don Tripp. The increase in water rates are a burden on residents of Westminster. The tier structure is set up with unrealistic use for each tier. The prices and tiers result in the highest water prices by far in the region. Our lot size is 12,717 square feet. We took out the original grass and put in tall, this is drought-resistant grass, but still needs to be watered. Our bill due in July was $102. The bill due in August was $424. The billing cycles need to be consistent, not 26 to 33 days. The rates and tier use needs to be brought in line with the communities around us. You do not want brown dead Westminster. Thank you, Chris and Greg Asman. We request this email to be read aloud. No vote of confidence in city manager Don Tripp. We are a family of five with three small children. I have had to leave work to stay home with our boys since March, leaving us in one-income family. We have received the water bill assistance for which we are extremely grateful, but even after that, our water bill is almost twice what it was the last time this year for much less usage, and we are struggling to pay. Our lawn has died. We are timing showers to five minutes max and re-wearing clothes. We have started buying bottled water now. No water balloons for our kids, no kiddie pool in the yard, no playing in the sprinklers, even when everything else is closed. Our wonderful neighbors, neighborhoods look sad with brown lawns. Our city looks sad when you look at the residents but wonderful when you look at city property. The division is clear. Something needs to change now. Belina Shade. I request this email to be read aloud. We vote no confidence in city manager Don Tripp. The increase in water rates are a burden on the residents of Westminster. The tier structure is set up unrealistic use for each tier. The prices and tiers result in the highest water prices by far in the region. This needs to be addressed immediately. Stop overcharging. John Barry and Anna Sanchez. And these are quite a few. I'm not going to go through them all, but quite a few that we received. So thank you for your comments and your voices. I hope to work with our council and staff members to really nail this down and figure out how we can best make Westminster a livable and affordable place.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I got it. Did that complete your comments, Counselor Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last week, I had the privilege of attending the Parks Recreation Library Open Space Meeting. They have a lot to talk about. They're very, very busy. They talked about adding eBooks. They talked about the golf and parks and working as normal and what isn't working as normal and how they've had not been able to hire some seasonal positions. And so, you know, it's a lot of extra work. They, big congratulations to Rodney Larson. He won a great award representing our city. They are on pace for 2 million people to use the dog park this year, so there was a lengthy conversation about that. The paddle boating, there were 635 permits issued this year for paddle boating on Stanley Lake. We lost 6% of our trees this year due to early freezes last year and late freezes this year, but they are working to replace those and take down what isn't alive any longer. They talked about operations focusing on food insecurity and homelessness and working with growing home. They talked about the play at the golf course, The Rough, and how many people attended. They had 434 people who attended. They had 14 performances. And then Zombie Golf will be coming soon. They also talked about a Westy Rise Pass that is specific for COVID. It's $50, and residents can acquire that to use the facilities. Our facilities are opening. Fitness, the City Park Fitness Center opened this week. Swim and Fit will be opening this week, and they're moving at a slow but deliberate pace so that they do things wisely. The mini-grants, they did a little report on the mini-grants, specifically Vista Ridge has their re-landscaping done, and there were awesome pictures of that, and that will be on the website. And they talked about a coming mobile library, mobile art classroom, and neighborhood in a box, so fun things to look forward to. And then today, we, Counselor Seymour and myself, attended the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council as well, and so I just have a few notes from that, that they will be coming to the cities for a renewed resolution to work on the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. Many cities are a part of that council and partake in it. It's a good council to be a part of, and they'll soon be coming to us for renewal. They talked about the climate change impact on rocky flats, and they talked about how we have a flat budget. For rocky flats, there'll be no changes this year as they give cities an opportunity to figure out- For rocky flats, there'll be no changes this year as they give cities an opportunity to figure out COVID. And they know that the cities are going through some struggles with budgets. So they wanted to give us a break in that. And the next meeting will be in February, it is expected to be electronic. There are over forty-four people that attend that meeting regularly, so they don't have a location where they can put us, where we can meet in person. I wanted to say a big special thank you to Stephen Gay and Josh Marks and Matthew Munch, good job. You guys are really serving our city and truly appreciate that. And then I also wanted to make a comment about the comments tonight, I really appreciate it when the public comes forward. I appreciate the input. I recognize that I have seen the letters, I have seen the bills. And I am concerned that we have some water, we have some water, people paying very, very high cost for water. And I want to make sure we address that. And so we will be having water rate meetings October eighth, October twentieth, November third, and November seventeenth. And where we will specifically be addressing these problems. And I'm hoping that we'll be addressing the rates, we'll be addressing comparisons of other cities, not only here in Colorado, but across the nation. That we will also be addressing the plan for, so when people are charged from date to date. I think those are big issues. I did a little walking up in the north this weekend, just to take a look at some of the yards that there are, big, beautiful yards. But I can see where there are high costs for water. So yes, we need to revisit this and just make sure we are doing our due diligence as the city council. So I am looking forward to those dates, and I am looking forward to having those conversations with each other. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wanted to thank our citizens for taking the time to write and/or call in their comments. It's been difficult times since the lockdown. And I know my fellow counselors and I were very concerned, especially in March and April, we were hearing very little from our residents. So I appreciate the many venues that they do have available, writing, leaving a message, or calling in live. So I encourage that discussion as we move forward through many issues, including as budgetary issues, as the city manager mentioned. So thank you for our citizens' participation.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate what my colleague said, I appreciate all the people who came and spoke about the various concerns they have about water and the city manager. I've shared some of their concerns since 2018, being the one person who voted no on those rates. And now I think that we're seeing a lot of what I was concerned about. So I'm glad to hear my colleagues' interest in addressing this. And I look forward to fruitful discussions in our water meetings that we're gonna be having. So that is it, thank you.
Mayor Protem Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to say actually thank you to Counselor Demont for recognizing nine eleven and his first series of comments tonight. It definitely, nineteen years ago, has gone by very quickly. But I think one thing that we continually see is our fire and first responders being pressed into service. This last week, we have seen throughout Oregon, California, and even Colorado, really dangerous wildfires. And these firefighters are putting their lives at risk to protect life and property. So definitely appreciative of them and of the sacrifices that are made every single day to protect us. I also just wanted to mention that a lot of the schools are starting to see students trickle in. And so I know that that can cause some anxiety in this time of pandemic. And I'm wishing everybody a safe and healthy school year. I know some folks have decided to stay online all year, and I think if that's a good choice for your family, that's a good choice. Other people are doing the hybrid option, and if that's a good choice for your family, that's a good choice. And some people are, if school is offered, full day are taking that option. I'd like us all to give each other grace, to not be judgmental, and allow everyone the space to make the choice that's right for their family and for their comfort level. And obviously, the school districts are doing their best to protect our children and putting data and sound measures in place. I have to agree with all of my colleagues that have mentioned how much they appreciate public input. We do a better job as policymakers when we hear from the people. And Counselor Seymour has said throughout all of this that he really was concerned about the level of public participation. So tonight we heard from you. And so I hope more residents will continue to bring their voice to council in whatever medium that we're utilizing for our meetings. That said, I do know there is movement to get into City Hall again soon, as soon as we can do it safely. So tonight, we've heard from a lot of you expressing your sincere concern about your water bills. And I really sympathize. I know personally what it's like to have a higher-than-expected bill, the type of financial choices that forces, and the type of stress and anxiety it can cause. Just until this last year, we were a single-income family for a family of five, so it was, other than my city council, small stipend. So it is real, and it is troubling, and particularly when you're in a pandemic and so many people have limited income or have lost their jobs. So, you know, Westminster City Council took that seriously in this body. As many people mentioned, we did vote unanimously not to increase rates in 2021. We also simultaneously looked at ways that we could alleviate some of the immediate pain from the current water rates. So looking, how can we use CARES funding for rebates? How do we promote our sprinkler system audits? What, you know, the emergency home repair program. This year, we started a turf buyback program, so it would be a little bit easier to make a more water-conscious yard. I believe every member of this council really does believe in wanting to have a high quality of life for every resident, regardless of zip code, regardless of income. And we want to make sure it's livable and accessible to all residents. As far as the need, you know, personally, it would have been a whole lot easier not to raise rates, right? It would have been politically expedient, but it would have been deeply irresponsible, given the data we were given at the time. And I can't put my own ease ahead of my concern for the community. So in my estimation, my job right now is to make sure that this community has safe, reliable, dependable drinking water. And we have to set rates, not just because of my feeling of responsibility, but actually by our charter, we have to set rates to meet the needs to run this utility. We did do a multi-year study, looking at the age and the condition of our system. And that determined that twenty-five percent of that four-billion-dollar utility system was beyond its design for life. And that's a really staggering and frightening figure. And it's obviously impossible for us to tackle all of those repairs at once. So our Public Works Department addressed just the most critical needs. And all of us voted, including Counselor Demont, voted to approve using the revenue from our new rates to bond, to make those repairs, replacements, and capital investments. So we are actively investing in our water system, and that's something I am proud of and something that's gonna serve our community now and for generations. So I already mentioned this, but the Westminster Charter requires that we set rates to meet the operating costs of this utility. And many people have said they want to protect the safety and reliability of our system, but they don't want to raise rates. That would be my top choice, too. However, I don't have a magic wand. I don't know how to propose to accomplish making hundreds of millions of dollars of capital investment without new revenues. Not only would this method violate our charter, but our water utility is an enterprise fund, and that's governed by Tabor. That's how we are able to bond, that's what gives us the legal authority. And as an enterprise fund, we're precluded from having more than ten percent of our revenue come from outside of the utility. So in my estimation, we're kind of stuck with a system that needs repairs with a very limited means of paying for it. I'm excited for our conversations on October eighth, because I'm open to blue-sky thinking. If we can come up with a better way, let's do it. Because all of us, and I really truly believe all of us on this call, want safe, dependable water, and we don't want to overburden our residents. But I do feel I have a certain duty of care, and I can't do what's easier versus what I think is right. I also just really want to say, I believe that Westminster has benefited from dedicated public servants. We have a legacy of it, both elected and professional. So this isn't about blame of previous generations of leaders. But knowing what we know today, knowing what we know now, I can't in good conscience delay critical repairs. There are many examples of communities that have neglected or deferred maintenance of their infrastructure, and who ultimately pays is the residents. So I hear you, I'm excited for our conversations on October eighth. And, you know, I need to keep hearing from you, I recognize the financial implications. But this is where we're at and why I voted back in 2018 for the rates that we have now.
Any other comments from council? Moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is a consent agenda. This is a vote of city council on a group of routine matters. All items under one item, we only have one item in, so I will presume that there's someone asking to have that one removed. So I will now open it up to the floor, Mr. Volz, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda, item eight A.
Counselor Demont?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And this will be a roll call vote, Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Demont votes yes. Mayor Protem Sykes?
Yes.
Sykes votes yes. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes. And Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Volz votes yes.
All right, thank you, counsel, motion carries on a seven oh vote. Next item on the agenda is appointments and regulations, we have none tonight. I have received word that we will reschedule Mr. Gibson and his replacement for another night. Unfortunately, due to the issues we had early on, starting the council meeting, we will move on to the next item. Next item up on the agenda is the resolution authorizing the participation in the Jefferson County Public Safety Fiber. And Ms. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the resolution number thirty, authorizing the city of Westminster to become a participating entity in the Jefferson County Public Safety Fiber Optic Network.
Counselor Demont?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, or is there any discussion by any member of council? Counselor Volz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question. I said a quick question regarding this network that we're ready to participate in. It does allow for an annual fee, so I want to ask someone, do we know, I asked earlier, it appears there will be no annual fee and no anticipated annual fee coming up in the near future. So I just want to confirm that for the discussion tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tripp?
I'm gonna ask Chief Carlson or his staff, who've been working on this, to answer your question, thank you for that question, Counselor Volz.
Chief Carlson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. I will turn that question over to Karen Sweet, who is our communications manager. She should be able to answer that question very quickly, so Karen, if you would do that, please.
Thank you, Chief. According to Jeff Irvin, the executive director of the Jefferson County Emergency Communications Authority, all the building costs are covered, are paid by the Jefferson County Emergency Communications Authority. There's no cost to the city for the last mile build, and they are not anticipating any future costs. And I am going to ask that Jeff Irvin, who is with us on this call, jump in if he has any additional comments.
Karen, thank you, this is Jeff Irvin, yes, the operational costs are very low for this network, it's privately owned, and the board is not anticipating any kind of cost recovery or annual fees at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin, and Ms. Sweet, thank you for those answers, I just wanted to check, because in the packet, there was quite a long section for annual fees, the potential for future annual fees, so I just wanted to check on that. But it overall sounds like a really great network, and I'm appreciative of your work on it, so thank you very much, and thanks for those answers.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, item ten A, please, the roll call vote.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, we will begin with Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Demont votes yes. Mayor Protem Sykes?
Yes.
Sykes votes yes. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith? Smith votes yes. Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Volz votes yes. And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes.
Motion carries on a seven oh vote, I thank you very much for counsel, Chief Carlson, you and your staff, we appreciate very much the work you've done on this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next item up is item ten B, this is resolution number thirty-one, Counselor Scully?
Yes, sir. I move to adopt resolution number thirty-one, authorizing the assignment of six thousand twenty-eight, I'm sorry, I've misread that, six million twenty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars of the city's private activity bond allocation from the federal government for 2020 to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority for the qualified purposes set forth in the resolution, and authorize the mayor and the city attorney to execute the required documents in the same form as presented.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
All right, Mayor Protem Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a pretty large sum of money, and I think it's a good cause and a very efficient use, having someone else administer it, and obviously a noble public purpose. My question is really, how do we intend to promote so those who are looking to be a part of the fire in Westminster are aware of this program and can utilize it?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, our economic development staff, Chase, Jenny, or John are on the line, they can handle this, thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, you're running with this one?
Yes, I'd be happy to address this. So certainly Westminster staff and our economic development marketing personnel can certainly market this. But our partner in this, which is CHAFA, already does a significant amount of outreach. So really, I could take the question, it would be a partnership to make sure that this is well-published between both the city staff marketing, or I'm sorry, city of Westminster Economic Development Marketing Staff as well as CHAFA, to make sure that this is well-marketed.
Okay, I would just hope that it would be available on the city of Westminster's housing resources page as well, I'm sure it probably already is. But when we're allocating our money, I just, I do want to make sure our residents know that there are kids who are looking to start a home, or maybe they're finally out of being able to rent, that they can do so with the assistance of this CHAFA program. But since we are allocating our eligible dollars, I just, I do hope we have a way to point people towards it. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had sent staff earlier a question, because I found it particularly interesting that one of the qualified purposes of the bond included an exempt facility bonds for hazardous waste facilities, solid waste disposal facilities, water and sewer facilities. So it just kind of lended to a question of whether or not we could use this as leverage, as a resource, to look at our water situation. So you eloquently wrote it in an email, but I'd like you to briefly answer it on record, please.
Mr. Evans?
Sure, absolutely, so as we indicated in our response, I mean, genuinely. Sure, absolutely. So as we indicated in our, in our response, I mean, generally speaking, these private activity bonds are really meant to be used by a private user. There's a, it's just to clarify too, the six million dollars that's indicated in this is not six million dollars in cash the city's allocating. It's bond capacity that can be, that can be allocated towards a project. The city, as, as, as a function of the city, has the ability of issuing municipal debt. By the city, obviously privately run corporations and businesses do not have that ability. So essentially what we're, we're doing is providing this bond capacity to a, a private or a, or organization that would normally not have this ability. So to answer your question specifically related to the utilities, I think the simplest answer is that the city already has the bond capacity and has been issuing bonds related to our, our, our water infrastructure. It's certainly something that we could, that we could and continue to look to see if there is a, a possible fit in the future. It's also worth noting that the, there's a pretty very strict timing component, and this is a function of the IRS whereby the funds that the, the activity bond caps have to be assigned typically in the same year that they're awarded. So you know, as they're awarded this year, there's, there's not necessarily the, the time to award it, to, to issue the bonds and then award it to a city infrastructure project. So I think simply put, it's something that we can consider, continue to look at to see if there is a potential project that fits. But as of the projects that we're, that we've been considering, this was our, the, the best use of these ones that we could take.
Thank you very much. That answers all my questions.
Any other questions from council in regards to item ten B, resolution thirty-one? Seeing no other comments, Ms. Parker, item ten B, roll call, please.
Certainly. Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Bowles votes yes. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. And Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Demont votes yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes on a seven oh vote. Next item on business is item ten C, resolution thirty-two. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor Atchison. I move to adopt resolution number thirty-two approving the city council's revised vision statement.
Counselor Volz.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Counselor Scully, you have a comment or question?
I have a comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to read this statement that our council was able to agree upon. I think it's just a really great statement. It's short, it's to the point. I think it'll roll off tongues. And it truly encompasses the spirit of our city. We are a thriving community of safe neighborhoods and beautiful open space that is sustainable and inclusive.
Okay, thank you very much. Next I have Mr. Seymour. I thought you had a comment or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comment on, on this one. Yes, and I thank Counselor Scully for reading that into the record. And I want to thank my fellow counselors as we work through a new vision statement on this. And wordsmithed it many times. I think it's important, what is in there is critical in the vision statement. Also to recognizing what is not in there too is that looking at the, and using the comments from our citizens, biannual citizen survey, looking at the comments that came in on the statistical mailed out that we mailed to four thousand residents and then also the ones that came in online. What your comments and how those were ranked had a direct effect on the update to our vision statement. So I want to thank those who had a vested interest in the past one and then for having them work forward to the new vision statement. So I appreciate that my colleagues' hard work on this.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to say thank you to my colleagues. I think we did a really good job working together to craft this vision statement. I think it really much more effectively captures the vision of Westminster City Council. And we really did rely heavily on citizen input. So for me, as someone who's been on council for some, for some time, I really feel like the integrity of the vision is, is kept, but the confusion is gone. And I do think that that term urban center was really triggering for a lot of people and it made them think we were going to have wall-to-wall density. And that's not what we want. And it was just becoming a source of consternation. So I'm really happy with where we ended up. I do want to let you know that sustainability and inclusivity and open space were so important to our residents. But I think as a council, foundationally, we know that you can't have a high quality of life if you don't feel safe and secure. And so I really felt that the image that this vision statement inspired was one that was really easily translatable and I think will continue to lead us in the future. So thank you to this team and thank you to staff and to our residents. And thank you to the facilitators for helping us. Because as much as Counselor Seymour thought that was a lot of wordsmithing, I, I have a feeling it could have been a lot worse.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd have to agree with Mayor Protem Sights and most of what she said as far as the, it's a good vision statement and I feel it's very inclusive. And I think some of the rub that I've heard from residences around the urban center. And I think that that gave the wrong vision and it didn't align with what our residents wanted. I would also say that it's a short and sweet statement and I like that. But it did take longer than short and sweet to come to consensus on, on a good statement. So I think we all did a lot of good, hard work and I thank my colleagues for the work that we did on that, that Saturday afternoon. And I think we came up with something that is a lot more inclusive and really speaks more of Westminster than what we had in the past.
Are there other comments from council members? Seeing Ms. Parker, resolution thirty-two, item ten C is a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Bowles votes yes. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Demont votes yes. And Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Next item on the agenda is item ten D. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interests will be best be served by authorizing a negotiated purchase from the sole source provider, Growing Home Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand from the Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funds to help offset the economic and social impacts associated with COVID-19 by providing food assistance to vulnerable individuals and families in substantially the same form as presented.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item ten D. Is there any comments from council? Counselor Volz. I'm sorry, hang on. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly thank staff for their work on this and continuously finding ways to help our residents in a hard time. I know that, you know, this is, it's, it's been difficult year for everybody. The same goes, so goes 2020. So anytime that we can find ways to use the, the funds that are out there to help our residents and businesses, I think that that's good and I appreciate the work.
Counselor Volz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank our staff for the, the developing this partnership with Growing Home and all the great work they do. And I know I have been involved in a number of food drives on Saturday mornings, numerous occasions, helping them out, and it was well worth it and felt really good. I did have a really quick question about the overall program. I had asked about any kind of administrative fee that might be pulled out of the hundred thousand and apparently they're, they're not, it's built in. But then there's also a vehicle fee. Can someone tell me a little bit about, is that for transporting some of the food from one place to the other to help families out? Or what is the vehicle fee for? Or is there one?
Mr. Tripp.
Yes, I'll take, I'll take a short answer at it and Kate Scarborough that's here to go into more detail if you want. But essentially it's allowing for the reimbursement of the purchase of a bus that can be used long-term for the hauling of these materials, which is a great investment in growing home and really helps them out a lot. And I think what was reported is the cost of that bus and the equipment is somewhere between forty-five and sixty thousand dollars. So that would have been a real difficulty for them, I believe. And I think it was a, it's, it's a wise investment that will yield benefit long-term.
For that answer. And I think they do such great work and this is tremendous work by staff and throughout this entire pandemic that we've worked closely with growing home. And I plan to support this tonight. So thank you for everyone who's been involved. I just had a few quick questions. So thank you for those answers.
Thank you, Council. Those is Mr. Tripp. I appreciate it. As we know, Growing Home had a number of issues with the one vehicle they had about the ability to keep that thing running. And when you're trying to get food and shelter items out to people, if you don't have a reliable transportation that has a monumental effect on them as well. So we appreciate what your staff is doing on this. Are there any other comments on item ten D? Seeing none. Ms. Parker, so roll call vote on item ten D, please.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith. Smith votes yes. Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Bowles votes yes. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Demont votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes. And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes.
Thank you, council. Item ten D carries on a seven oh vote. Next item on the agenda is item ten E. Mayor Protem Sights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may move that based on a recommendation of the city manager, city council finds the public interest will be best served by ratifying a negotiated sole source contract of up to five hundred forty thousand dollars with the Senior Hub Inc. regarding the West D Rise Food Security Program developed in response to the economic and social impacts associated with COVID-19.
Counselor Scully.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council on item ten E?
Yeah. Uh, I can't get in there.
Well, we'll recognize you anyway, Counsel Volz.
Thank you. I can't type very fast. So I just want to compliment Greg Moss and John Hall and our team. This is amazingly innovative program, which is going to help people with, that are food insecure, which is something that I think on council, we've all talked about. And then, and we supported and it's so important now, more than ever. But it's also helping our small businesses. So there'll be several businesses involved in this program. So it helps on both ends. It helps businesses and restaurants. And then also helps people food. It's, it's really genius and it's a brilliant idea. So I want to thank staff for coming forward with this and using these funds in this way and being innovative and finding a way to make this work. So thank you again for your work. I will be supporting this tonight.
All right. Mayor Protem Sights.
Counselor Bowles stole my talking points. Those are, that was exactly it. This program is a win-win. It's a win for our food insecure families and individuals. And it is a win for our local restaurants. And so I, I do have to say, stretching those cares dollars as far as they can go and multiplying the impact in Westminster is something that our team has been exceptional at. So just wanted to say thank you. And, and looking forward to seeing this program and seeing perhaps the ability to expand it if there is a second wave of funding in the future. Doesn't look likely, but if there is.
Any other comments from council? Ms. Parker, this is item ten E is a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Smith. Smith votes yes. Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Bowles votes yes. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Demont votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes.
Thank you, council. Item ten E carries on a seven oh vote. Moving on to the next item. Mr. Volz, I have you up for item F one.
Okay, good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to ratify the acceptance of the funds in the amount of one million, six hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and sixty cents received in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen Colorado Emergency Management Medical Services Supplemental Payment Program.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Smith, I think you have a comment.
I retract it, sir.
I'm sorry?
I withdraw. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Seymour.
I withdraw too. I was, I was late getting in the box. So thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem Sights.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to our fire department for going after this grant. So for those of you who maybe have not read the packet, this grant will allow some additional funding coming from Medicare and Medicaid services for our EMS services and ambulance rides to folk, for folks. So helping us get reimbursement for that. And it's significant because Medicare and Medicaid, Medicare is forty-two percent of our ambulance rides. Those, those residents have Medicare as their, their payer and twenty-six percent have Medicaid. So that's more than half of our, our payer population. I was really surprised that commercial insurance is only sixteen percent. Everyone on this council, it just kept hitting our eyes each, each month when we were getting our financials, a huge pay down of bad debt that we had to acknowledge from EMS services, basically self-pay individuals that we're not going to pay. And we just had to finally get that off the books. So this is something that will really help us provide, help our, our fire department. So thank you for going after this money.
Counselor Volz.
So it happened again. Mayor Perkins Sights just took my comments that I was going to say. I, I just want to confirm with, I guess, our chief or someone else in the fire department. Related to EMS, it appears that in our packet, an, an average pickup by an ambulance is eight hundred to fourteen hundred dollars. And then our average reimbursement for Medicaid recipients, which is Health First Colorado averages more around two hundred dollars. So there's a giant gap there, obviously. It's been a long-term problem. This is, this is to solve that. This fund, that's the, the result to make up in that gap. Is that correct?
Mr. Tripp.
Counselor Volz, thanks for the question. Short answer is yes, but the longer answer by the professional that's worked so hard on this is Jeremy Hill. Jeremy, would you like to come on and speak to that for just a second for the council?
Thank you, city manager, Tripp. Uh, Counselor Volz, that's correct. The average ambulance bill right now is roughly eight hundred to fourteen hundred dollars per transport. That's solely based on the types of treatments that are required as well as the nature of the medical complaint to the patient. And yes, our average reimbursement from Medicaid, that's Colorado Health First for Medicaid is two hundred dollars per patient. It may even be a little less than two hundred dollars, but it's basically a flat rate. And we aren't allowed to balance bill those patients. Basically, once we receive that reimbursement, there's no further billing allowed. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. It was in the packet. I just want to confirm that because I think it's a tremendous effort by you, Mr. Hill and and Chief Hall and everyone else involved in this because this shows innovation and financial sustainability and getting in there and doing what you can to help the And Chief Hall and everyone else involved in this because this shows innovation and financial state sustainability and and getting in there and doing what you can to help the city. Be financially sustainable. So again, I would say thank you and I again plans of I would obviously support this. So but thank you for that answer.
Other comments from council? Ms. Parker, this is item ten F one. It's a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Vols votes yes. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. And Counselor Smith. Smith votes yes.
Thank you, Council. Move back to item F two. Mr. Vols, you're up again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the fire department to submit an application for the fiscal year two thousand twenty. Cycle of the Colorado Emergency Medical Services Supplemental Payment Program.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item F two. Is there any comments or questions on ten F two? Seeing none. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Vols votes yes.
Thank you, Council. Item ten F two also carries as the second half of that as a unanimous vote. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is item ten G one. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the police department to apply for the two thousand twenty-one Peace Officer Mental Health Support Grant Program that funds comprehensive psychological services.
Counselor Demott.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for item ten G one. Is any comments or questions from council? Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to first thank um staff and the PD for continuously looking for funding sources to supplement our general fund dollars. Um, and more so, I'd like to thank them for um providing and looking at these specific kind of programs for our police officers. With so much national narrative, talking about taking sources of funds away from police departments, I think my opinion is. That we do better for safety of our um residents by making sure we have adequate sources of funding for things like mental health. For our police officers and firefighters. These individuals um have a really rough job. They see things that most of us don't see on a day-to-day basis. And I think that um this is very consistent with um something that was added to our strategic plan in my time a couple of years ago. To put mental health at the forefront of what we do as a municipality. And obviously, that's not always something municipalities do for um. That's kind of often more of a county thing, but obviously, mental health does affect our employees and our residents. So wherever we can. Um, do things that address um any kind of mental health things, I'm a big proponent of it. Um. So I really appreciate these programs and I appreciate the way that we um go at funding of these and I, you know, am glad to support this this evening.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to concur with um Counselor Demott. We. Both of us were big proponents, the whole council was, of putting mental health on into our strategic plan, recognizing that. Um, this has really surfaced in our country and it needs to be addressed. And so um I thank you, Counselor Demott, for your words. I concur with you. This is so important for our police department and I'm I'm just so grateful for our police department taking the time to. Apply for this grant and to see this as a necessity. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? The only thing I'd like to add is uh as Counselor Demott and Scully talked about what it does for our employees, but this also. Supports their family members uh in getting the help they need in dealing with these traumatic issues. So again, thanks to everyone who was involved in this. Ms. Parker, this is item ten G one. It's a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Vols votes yes. And Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes.
Thank you, Council. Item ten G one carries on a seven oh vote. Uh, Counselor Scully, if you would, please, the second half of that.
Happy to, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager, find that public interest would be best served by authorizing a sole source contract. For Jamie Brower Psychological Services and Consulting, Inc. for comprehensive psychological services.
Counselor Demott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item ten G two. Are there comments from council? And Mr. Vols.
I just have a quick question. This is a good program and I'm glad to support it and I'm glad it's on the agenda again, but I do always have questions about or almost always. About sole source contracts. Can someone tell me, it appeared in our packet that um. Jamie Brower Service Psychological Services is um very well versed in. Peace Officer Police Psychological Services. Is that the case why we're going sole source with this one individual? That they already have a a history with our department and have particular expertise in the area of police officer uh services?
Mr. Tripp.
Yes. Yes, Counselor Vols, you're exactly right. It's a delicate service as you might imagine. Uh, we have great confidence in this individual and in the company. Uh, I'll invite Chief Carlson into the conversation if he'd like to say more.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Uh, good evening again, Council, Tim Carlson, the Chief of Police. And to your question, Mr. Vols, yes. Um, to both of those. First of all, we have an ongoing relationship with Dr. Bauer and her. Um, uh, her program that she has has done a lot of work for us on uh pre-hire work. As well as fitness for duty issues, critical incidents. Um, her and her staff have been exceptional and we've worked with them for several years. Uh, she's uh board certified in uh police and public safety psychology. Uh, she's also the academy president. Of the American Board of Police and Public Safety Specialties. So she's got a. Her focus is in this area and it has been for a number of years. And although there are other resources out there. Uh, we have uh worked with her extensively and this sole source was just a natural progression. Uh, a- as we expand into some of those additional services for our folks. So those were the reasons for the request for sole source.
Well, thank you, Chief Carlson and uh Mr. Tripp. I appreciate that answer and I'm glad it's on the agenda and this is an outstanding program and I. Sole source always like they get my attention, but that makes perfect sense and. It didn't look like the packet indicated as well, but thank you for confirming that. And uh, it's a pleasure to vote for this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from any member of the council on item ten G two? Seeing none. Ms. Parker, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Sights votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Vols votes yes. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. And Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Demott votes yes.
Thank you, Council. That's a seven oh vote for item ten G two. Council, that concludes the business items that we have on the agenda tonight. Uh, the next item is item ten H. Uh, this is a report from the city staff on COVID nineteen updates. Mr. Tripp, I'll turn it over to you and your staff to go through this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just kick this off and tell you that we're going to have conversations tonight for provides some information on the way of case data. Um, facility openings, uh, financial sustainability, homelessness and the emergency declaration monthly report. Uh, I have Max Kirschbaum and then he'll be followed uh by Jason Gink, Larry Door, uh Kate Scarborough and uh. Our Chief Counsel, uh, Dave Frankel. So I'll just ask Max if you'd pick it off and everybody else queue up and be ready to jump in after. The person in front of you is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Um, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities. Um, the slides that we're presenting this evening will be familiar. They are. Similar to the slides that we've been showing for the last several weeks. Um, we do anticipate the possibility. Of uh new some new guidance coming out from the governor's office. Uh, at on at any day with a a more of a. Color-coded dial system that would better describe a set of eight metrics that would be judged by. The public health officers in each of the individual counties or public health agencies. Um, until that time, the slides that we're going to show this evening will be similar. So if I could have the next slide, Matt? This is the uh three-day state average of cases reported as of September twelfth. Again, if you look over the last approximately one month period, you'll see similar patterns, I think, that emerge according to. Day of the week uh and how and when reporting occurs, but I think you could say things have remained. Fairly stable in the terms of number of cases through um. There's this is through Saturday data. Next slide, please. Uh, this also is the s- state data with a focus on the vertical bars are the amount of testing that's occurring by either. CDPHE or commercial labs. Again, that data with the similar kinds of fluctuations has remained fairly stable. And if you look again at the red line, which indicates the positivity rate data. Um, as of September twelfth also for this slide that um. We're we're at about a three percent positivity rate on a statewide basis. You'll see in a moment how that compares with the two counties, but about about three percent range here. Next slide, please. So then going to Jefferson County, couple of slides um uh that are also be familiar to you. Uh, here again, if you look at the the three-day average, the dark green line uh that's plotted on top of the bar chart. It it loo- it appears to be uh fairly steady with a slight downward trend. And um, the uh, the the actual number that uh corresponds to Friday, September eleventh. Was twenty-four point five as a three-day moving average uh for Jefferson County. Next slide, please. Then taking a look at um uh Jefferson County. Here, uh Westminster-specific data is not available on percent positives, but um. If you if you track the blue line, you'll see um. That it's in the range of four to five percent fairly consistently uh on for positivity rate. So for Jefferson County, a little bit higher than that that state average that we showed a couple of slides ago that. Has been hovering around the three percent. So the this has stayed fairly constant over the last month or so in the four to five percent range. Next slide, please. Uh, final two slides. This is the Adams County portion of Tri-County Health. Again, um, here again, similar to Jefferson County, you can see although the slide. Uh, as we've mentioned before, is presented in different fashion, the line showing the three-day average is a slight downward trend. With the number typically hovering around forty. And then the final slide. Uh. Here again, this is Westminster-specific data. They do, they are able and do break it down by municipality. Uh, also by neighborhood, if you want that level of depth, but at a municipality level. Um, this has remained steady in about the four and a half percent range, which is. Uh, if you go back to the state data, it's pretty much in line, pretty similar with state data for percent of positivity over a fourteen-day. Period. And this data is a a little bit older, a little bit slower to update, but through September seventh. Um. In a uh. Mayor Atchison sits on a uh weekly call with Dr. Douglas, the. Public Health Officer for Tri-County Health. Um, over the last couple of weeks, he has reported uh. To the Adams County Group that um joins that weekly meeting, mostly elected officials. That uh, the number of cases per one hundred thousand. Over a fourteen-day period, which will be one of the metrics in the color-coded dial. Has been on a on a slight uh downward path for Adams County. Uh, a couple of weeks ago was in the range of a hundred and twenty. And he reported on Thursday that that rate had dropped to about a hundred and four. Per one hundred thousand over a fourteen-day period. Um, so. It's important that he's paying attention to that because we think that will be one of the key parts of the color-coded dial that uh the state. Will be uh, that had, the state has been reviewing and will be uh published shortly, we would think. Um, as far as facility reopenings, um, just to repeat something that we've presented before. Uh, we have a published partial reopening date of October twelfth. That affects City Hall, the Public Safety Center, and then Municipal Service Center, the M S E. Um, that concludes my comments. Uh, unless you have any questions, I will turn the floor over to. Uh, Jason Gink, Parks, Wreck and Library Director.
Mr. Kirschbaum.
Seymour had a question.
Yeah, he's got one.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I I had a comment, uh mostly a comment as far as as testing and uh we were told that it the critical uh part of tracking this disease. Is testing and tracing. And so we are at a point right now where we have the opportunity. To especially on the uh testing side, uh fulfill um all of those needs. Uh, I I am encouraging uh everyone so that we can get the uh data that is relative to our population. To take advantage of testing facilities that we have uh here in the city are available to us. Um. Waterworld, uh, a majority of their gigantic parking lot is set up through uh for a drive-through testing uh system. Uh, if uh. If you test it out yourself, even on a lunchtime period, uh if you pre-register, uh the test may take uh three minutes. If you don't pre-register, the test may take five minutes. Uh, the results um are approximately four days following that. Uh, but that's still in line with uh or better than in some situations than we've seen in the past. So I'm I'm encouraging residents. Uh, symptomatic or not, because we know how the effect of asymptomatic carriers can affect us, but I'm I'm encouraging residents. Uh, to very much do your part and uh let's get everyone tested. Also, um, and the mayor can correct me on this because there may have been an update on this and I missed it on this morning's update. The uh MAC i- is also facilitating uh testing uh currently Thursdays from nine until two. Uh, at our uh Mature Adult Center uh on seventy-second. So uh, those are two opportunities. Uh, very easy, very quick, and then results that will give us the data that we need to know going forward. And so that we can see uh where we really at and and from uh prior comments. I I believe that these results are are uh the testing early on was skewed because we are only. I, I believe that these results are, the testing early on was skewed because we were only testing symptomatic people. And there's been a debate back and forth, should we test or not some test? I, I'm encouraging people, get tested. That way, if you are asymptomatic, you'll know where you stand on that and then you can protect others. And then more importantly, we can get true cross-the-board data. So thank you very much for that.
Counselor Seymour, thank you. Just to clarify, the people who go to the MAC are those who are uninsured or homeless. So do not go down there if you're otherwise. Go to, to the site at Waterworld. The capacity of testing there is 2,500 a day. We are very rarely over about 300 a day. So there is plenty of capacity, as Counselor Seymour pointed out, to go get your testing done. Again, we encourage everyone. Again, appreciate all the work the staff is doing. We will continue to have these test sites available. The only thing I would add to what Mr. Kirschbaum added earlier. We did have a somewhat of a disturbing trend that we were told about by Tri-County on Thursday that as they have increased the number of people doing the monitoring of compliance or facial coverings, they have more people out doing the surveys now, and we have seen a slight decline Adams County-wide, not within necessarily Westminster, but Adams County-wide. We saw about a 6% decline in people who were using facial coverings in the areas that they are asked to do that. So again, we encourage everyone to use your facial coverage when you're out in public or when you're in that. Also, as always, wash your hands, watch your social distancing. Try to make sure that we can get these numbers down. As Mr. Kirschbaum talked about, the Tri-County reported that on, as of Thursday of last week, our positivity rate was at 5.4% for Adams County. Again, the number is coming down. Our infection rate, our instant rate, as he indicated, was at 104. And others, for us to move to the next level, which is to protect our neighbors, we need to get down to 75. And that's per 100,000. So we're, we're on our way. Each week we get a, a lower number and we'd like to make sure it continues in that method. Mr. Gink, I think you're up next.
Thank you so much, Jason Gink, Director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries. I actually have quite a bit to update you, but I'll be very brief and I'll focus really on services that were just restored today as well as kind of what's on the horizon. We really do miss serving our patrons and we're so excited to have them back into our facilities and, and back into our programs. To start with, what opened today? Today we opened the Swim and Fitness Center to focus on lap lane swimming. We also opened computer use at our libraries. Both libraries have the ability now to have reserved time for drop-in computer use. To give you an idea on the popularity of libraries, while we've been having the Drive-Up Curbside Program in our libraries, we've, we've surpassed 38,000 items that have been checked out through that type of service, which is really exciting because obviously that's a new way, in a different way that we're delivering that service. Also, right on the horizon, and just in a few days, is our preschool program. Our state licensed preschool program will open on September 17th at City Park Recreation Center, at City Park Recreation Center, Swim and Fitness Center, and the Recreation Center. So those are sort of the up-to-the-day openings that just happened this morning. But right on the horizon, I'll just quickly go through some things if you're curious about some of these areas. City Park Fitness Center, we've already opened for general weight room use. Starting in mid-September, we'll be adding programming like fitness classes. And we hope to have more services restored by early October. The Swim and Fitness Center, lap swim lanes and locker use started today. Preschool will start September 17th. And other additional amenities such as the weight room and racquetball courts were open to the public as early as, mid-October. And as, as quickly and as efficiently as we can. City Park Recreation Center preschool program will start on the 17th with some outdoor programming like youth dance, chess, and limited arts and arts classes. And we'll be moving some of the outdoor programming into the Recreation Center as soon as reasonable. Pool use at City Park Rec will start with lap swims in mid-October. And we do hope to have, if, if everything goes well, by the first of early, or early November, or November 1st, to restore most of the service City Park Rec. Westview preschool programming starts on the 17th. And general facility use for the public will be roughly in, in, in mid-October, which includes the weight room, racquetball, and some programming. And only two more. The Sports Center programming for drop-in use and rentals will start in mid-October. And the MAC facility will be continued to be, we don't have a reopen date just yet as we continue to evaluate the, the use of the facility to support community services such as growing home and food insecurity. So I know I went very quickly through those and certainly I can circle back if you have any questions about any of those specifics. And of course, staff will continue to send you weekly updates as, as we are prepared and as we move forward, those openings are more specific information. We have received some questions about how folks are accessing our facilities and services. And I just want to provide a very brief update on our pass program, which is very popular. All recreation passes that have been purchased prior to COVID enclosure have been put on temporary hold. And those pass holders have either received a refund if they requested it or they're receiving ongoing credit, meaning for any time we don't have full services, they're getting a credit towards future use. A Westy Rise Pass, and I appreciate Counselor Scully earlier mentioning this. A Westy Rise Pass was created. This pass is to be available as an option for our guests between now and the end of the calendar year. And the cost is roughly $12.50 per individual per month, which is by far our cheapest option of a service that we provide. And again, it's an option, but we wanted to provide it to our, our guests because we know that our services aren't typically the way that we provide them. And it provides a flexible cost option should our patrons be interested. And again, that pass is available now through the end of the year. And it averages about $12.50 per month as an option. Of course, there are many, many other options we provide for services, whether it's Westy Rise, whether they just want to reactivate their pass as-is. They could choose to use their credits towards the Westy Pass. Of course, they can use the Silver Sneaker program or pay-as-they-go options. I will pause there to see if you have any questions. I have a lot more information. Obviously, Parks, Recreation and Libraries is so excited to see our guests and our patrons back in our facilities. And as was reported earlier, we're working diligently and purposely to get our services restored as quickly as possible. And I certainly appreciate citywide and council support in doing so. And I'll stop in case you have any questions. Otherwise, I know Larry Dorr is queued up next on the financial recovery. But I'll pause for any questions for Parks, Recreation and Libraries. Thank you.
Counselor Bowles.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do. And Jason, Mr. Gink, thank you for all your work on this. This has got to be an incredibly huge amount of work. I do want to ask, however, how are you contacting people who had a pass, like an annual pass, and apparently you get credits towards the next pass? But how are you, how are we contacting them? Or how do people know to enroll in the new pass and get those credits?
Thank you, Counselor Bowles. I appreciate that question. And there's multiple ways. Frequently, we send emails to every registered patron in our system. I believe we do as many as two per month, and certainly we try to during COVID implications. And that's about 32,000 emails to give you an idea. That's how many folks get an email. So if you're a pass holder and you have a valid email address with us, and we test that, by the way, you're getting regular communication from us. Outside of that, we're heavily promoting the use of our, of our phone hotline, which is open seven days a week. And put in perspective, since we've had that phone line open since the closure of facilities, we've had over 10,000 phone calls with, with interest about recreation facilities. So they have that option as well. Finally, as patrons come into facilities and either to visit or to come in to use a facility and/or go online to reserve a time to go on a facility, there's additional information there to make sure folks know. And we certainly realize it can get confusing. And we're trying so hard to keep up with staff training, staff communication, to make sure our patrons are getting accurate information. But those are the primary ways that folks are getting access to those different options.
Hey, great. Thanks, Mr. Gank. Thanks for that information. And it's so important, you know, I, I've got an annual pass and I really need to get back in and start working out again. Big time. So this is great news and thank you for that answer.
And thanks again, Counselor Bowles. And just briefly, you know, if, if council hasn't had the opportunity to go in, I've had the opportunity to use the facility three times last week, City Park Fitness Center. And I will have to tell you, the way that our staff opens our facilities and the procedures that we have in place, I think you'd be very proud. And in my opinion, we do it of the best in the state. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Other comments from council before we move on?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council, Larry Dorr, Deputy City Manager and the Chief Financial Officer. I've just got a couple of things. I know you've got a very busy COVID-19 update report tonight. So just a couple of things. One, I just wanted to let you know that a week from tonight, I'll have an update on the city's CARES activities. That's the Coronavirus Aid Recovery and Economic Security Act and put into place by the federal government. I'll have an update on programs, spending to date. It's, it's been a little while, but since we've updated you, so I'll be doing that in, in a week from tonight, including having some information from a few others here at the city. But given that there are a number of items here on your COVID-19 update, I'll just have one follow-up presentation slide here. And that's related to your most recent meeting. And during the COVID-19 report, I was posed a question regarding furloughs. And so I've done some analysis with our team to put together some numbers for you tonight relative to furloughs, and then just to have a couple of additional comments related to savings and so forth as relates to furloughs. So Mr. Williams, if you would kindly raise that slide for Mayor and Council, I'll go ahead and run through that. And you know, the question was, what would a two-week or one-pay-period furlough develop? And you know, the, the best way to present that really was sort of in one furlough or one shift as it was. And of course, you could multiply these numbers by eight and come to the same equivalent. But you have to appreciate that we have some workers that work 48-hour shifts. We have folks who work 10-hour shifts and we have people who work less than that number of hours during a shift. They might be part-time workers and so forth, but the large majority of our regular full-time workforce is on a 4-10 shift. So we went ahead and calculated it as though one furlough would be the financial equivalent of that kind of one 4-10 work week day as it was. And the total savings citywide would be $450,000. And I know that it was asked to be presented by department, but that amount of information just started to get a little bit complex for a PowerPoint slide. So instead, I've just kind of broken down a couple of other items here that will give you some calculations. Our first responder employees, if they were to have one furlough, is the equivalent of $160,000. And that's, that $160,000 is included in the 450 right above it. So the, the, the third bullet here, all other employees would amount to $290,000. And of that $290,000, $210,000 would be realized in the general fund where we're recognizing and feeling the headwinds from our sales and use tax and recreation revenue declines and, and others. So I did also want to note, a footnote here, that this includes those workers who are in the police department and fire department, but who are civilians, they're still public safety employees. And if they were to not be furloughed, that'd be, that would be, reduce the savings in the general fund from $210,000 to $180,000. So as you could see, this gets complicated pretty quickly when you talk about different classes of workers and the amount of time involved and so forth. But it essentially, it runs across those particular categories. Related to that, you might wonder, how are things going in the selective hiring plan? I want to update that. The numbers are a little bit larger. Our savings to date is $1.8 million. We will have additional savings from those vacant positions. We have 46 vacancies at the moment. And if we run those through the end of the year, we'll realize 2.9 million in total savings citywide. And I'll just close by touching on a few things. There could be those in the audience or amongst Mayor and Council who might be curious about why the city of Westminster hasn't implemented a worker furlough to date. And first, most local governments across Colorado have not implemented a furlough. There's a potential for losing top talent. We want to avoid that. We've been an attractor of talent, both in our police and in our fire service. We've attracted administrative workers to our courts, to our finance department and our other administrative departments. And we want to also avoid this loss in service that other cities have been implementing as a result of their furloughs. But amongst all of them, we also know that we, we would probably experience, and the studies have shown this, have been many articles in industry journals written about adverse employee morale. And obviously, we have a concern about loss of productivity, loss of engagement and an impact to the city's culture, which ultimately can result in that, that very sensitive discretionary effort that our employees bring to us every day with our spirit values. And we know that frankly, we are experiencing some challenges with our employee morale as a result of our 46 vacancies. There's all that work amongst those vacancies spread across the rest of our workforce. And I, I really have to punctuate the 250 seasonal workers, the people that would be, some of them doing six to 10 hours a week or roughly 15 to 1600 hours a week, providing services across Westminster. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, this is the follow-up you're looking for. And unless there are any questions, then I'll just introduce Kate Scarbeck and our next subject on homelessness. Mayor?
I've got one comment, Mr. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this information. I think one of the things that I would at least mention when we talk about furlough, and I, I think we all have said at one time or another, it's obviously not our preference. And obviously, it's not good for morale. However, I think we're in unprecedented times where many private and government entities are actually doing furloughs. And so I think that unfortunately, it's almost become more of a norm than it has an exception being that there's, you know, very few parts of our economy that haven't been hit by COVID. And so I would at least just mention that as a, as a talking point or something for us to think about as we go into our budgets. Again, understanding that this, you know, it's not our preference for us to have to make any kind of cuts or, or furloughs. But the reality of our situation seems like we're going to have to make some hard choices. So whether or not this is one of them, I don't know. I guess we'll see what we, what we are presented this weekend with our, our budget retreat. But I wanted to at least mention that because although I understand the points that Deputy City Manager Dorr brought up, I think we're in kind of a strange point in time in history where, you know, these kind of decisions are probably going to have to get made at some level.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for this information. It's very helpful going into our meeting this upcoming Saturday with the budget retreat. Much like Counselor Demott has said, this isn't a first preference to cut in a budget. However, I think someone who had called in earlier had put it quite eloquently that the city must live within the budget like all Westminster residents have to live within their budget. And I can tell you firsthand, I think out of all of our council, I'm seeing as a staff member and as a policymaker the implications of implementing furloughs and layoffs and what that looks like and what that means to our employees. And while I appreciate the, the comments made, because it, it certainly does present a level of uneasiness and it affects a trickle-down effect. I, I truly understand that. But we have to look at all sides of the picture here to make sure that we are making the best fiscal responsible decisions, not just for this year, not just for next year, but for upcoming years. And so I, I know that we're using COVID dollars, thank goodness, but that only lasts us to the end of this year. What about next year and what about the, the year after that? And that's kind of where my, my placement is, because I was one to support this, if not, ask for it, for this information. So I just, I would like to say that I know that other agencies and government entities are looking at furloughs and layoffs. And I don't think that we should be exempt from looking at that ourselves. from looking at that ourselves. Um, I know Broomfield, Boulder, Denver, Aurora has all, uh, implemented these, uh, furloughs and/or layoffs. So, um, while this isn't an end-all-be-all, I certainly appreciate the information as a full breadth of information as far as how to get us, um, out of this eighteen to thirty million dollar deficit that we're facing as a city. So, thank you for this information, and I really look forward to going into discussions this, this Saturday.
Any other comments? Matthew, put us back up on your agenda sheet, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Larry Door, once again, let me introduce Kate Scarbeck, our Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department Senior Management Analyst. She, uh, joins us tonight with a brief overview. Uh, City Council acquired, inquired a few weeks ago about, uh, potential homelessness camp, encampments within the city. Uh, we've seen those reported, uh, within the metro area. Uh, separately, we've received inquiries about the upcoming cold weather season and efforts to support sheltering dur- during COVID-19. So Ms. Scarbeck, would you, uh, please, uh, carry forth this, uh, overview for the Mayor and City Council tonight? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Door. Um, thank you, Council. Thank you, the Mayor and, um, Mayor Pro Tem for having me tonight to give an opportunity to give you a brief overview of what has been happening during COVID and why we're taking the approaches we are. Um, Mr. Williams, would you mind advancing the slide, please? So, almost immediately upon, um, COVID impact being felt by the nation, um, the Centers for Disease Control immediately issued, um, camp guidelines for people experiencing homelessness. And they were very clear that we are not to move camps unless housing is available. And that is expressly designed in order to prevent the spread, the community spread of COVID. Um, and on the screen, I have the, um, the basic outline of what those guidelines say. I will say, on this, the picture that you see here is the most recently reported camp. Um, there is in fact, a tent underneath the canopy of that tree. Um, this picture was taken about a hundred feet away from the camp by our homeless navigator who started on, um, March 30th as part of a joint initiative with all of the municipalities and Jefferson County. Um, we are finding that we do have camps throughout Westminster as we have for the last several years. And like every summer, we are receiving more reports of camps. Our camps are not the encampments you see reported on the news. Um, they're not large scale. It's one, one tent, one, one family, one, um, one individual, a couple without children staying together. As I said, we do have a typical summer trend of seeing a rise in visible homelessness in the city, and that has been the case this year. One of the reasons that we have identified for that typical rise in homelessness over the summer is that winter shelter beds are no longer available for emergency sheltering. There are no indoor places to send people. And this year, that has been compounded by the effects of COVID-19. In fact, across the Denver metro area, we have seen a decrease of 53% of shelter beds available, um, because of social distancing requirements. So given that, we're not, we, we are, there's good news in all of this. We're not seeing a tremendous rise in new homelessness, but we are, in fact, we aren't seeing a rise in new homelessness. What we are seeing is chronically homeless individuals and couples without children, and, and a few handful of cases, families, um, who have struggled for years and are, um, now not able to obtain a shelter bed. And so we do have a number of initiatives in place for that, including working with our health departments who are both conducting street outreach in Westminster and across both of our counties to make sure that people are living in as safe, um, a condition as possible and are being screened for COVID. Um, Mr. Williams, would you mind moving on to the next slide? There are, under the CDC guidelines, though, exemptions from not moving people along. Um, one of those exemptions is public health, and the other exemption is public safety. Um, this is one example of a camp that did need to be, um, broken up. It is on state-owned land within Westminster, so we did not have the right to issue an abatement or trespass order. Um, but we did bring in Tri-County Health Department Street Outreach Team who went out to pick up a hundred and seventy-five syringes and injection materials that they, the day after we asked them to do so. Um, we mitigated the harm that could be done to the rest of the community by doing so. Um, the Tri-County Health Street Outreach Workers also lingered in the area and have returned repeatedly to see if they can make contact with the people who were living here to better educate them on safe practices and to ensure that this type of behavior does not continue within our city. Mr. Williams, next slide, please. Our housing, our housing, our homeless navigator, I should say, has been out and about across the city. We have camps, um, with roughly a hundred and thirty people living within them scattered throughout the entire city. Um, he has been working hard to connect people to permanent housing. Um, he currently has thirteen individuals in the process of obtaining permanent housing and/or housing vouchers. He has also, um, connected people to substance use treatment programs, mental health programs, um, addressing behavioral health issues that we're seeing, um, among the chronically homeless. He's also been aiding people with job searches and fifteen individuals with food security issues. In the past, the, um, second bullet point on this slide would have read shelters, but I mentioned shelter beds are not available. And in fact, within the last few weeks, we have gotten notice from all of the nonprofit service providers that were previously, um, providing congregate sheltering for winter, um, cold weather shelters, that they would not be able to do so in the faith-based or congregate sheltering models that they had provided for the past several years. So instead, they are moving more to hotel stays. The city of Westminster has also offered hotel stays. And on this next slide, I'd like to talk a little bit about what we're doing for cold weather shelterings. So, this upcoming season, which we've already technically started, I'm sure you'll all recall our snowstorm of almost a week ago, um, on those cold weather nights, the nonprofit, um, cold weather sheltering agencies will still call cold weather nights, and we will provide hotel stays. We are currently working with Adams County and Jefferson County to ensure that our city is fully covered. Um, it's looking like Adams County will take, will, is willing to take on, um, helping shelter people who are experiencing homelessness on both sides of the city. Jefferson County is working with a nonprofit partner that focuses predominantly in the southern part of the county, um, extending as far north as Arvada, but not into Westminster. But we will be covered in Westminster. And our homeless navigator and our police department are in fact, able to place people in hotels. We are working to extend, to, to expand the number of hotels that are willing to accept, um, an invoice or payment from the city to shelter people who are experiencing homelessness on extremely cold winter nights. We have also lined up $20,000 in CARES Act funds to be able to place people in hotels, um, whether it's a cold weather night or not for the remainder of the year. Um, those are people who have underlying health conditions that place them at greater risk of COVID. And we are working to streamline the process to ensure that it's as easy as possible to get people into hotel stays on those cold weather nights that we do have. Um, I'm going to pause there and ask what questions you may have for me. Um,
Counselor Demott?
Uh, what's Counselor Smith before me? Perhaps? I saw her name in there.
I already had her. I think you're the only one up right now.
Okay, great. Um, I just had some, some questions about the, you had said that we haven't seen, um, growing encampments. And I understand some of the CDC guidelines, but I've, I've actually been getting a handful of phone calls from people about growing encampments in the open spaces. Um, you know, and I guess there's been multiple, uh, reports to the PD by a couple individuals. And, you know, I know one resident that I spoke to over the last couple of weeks had shared with me multiple calls to the PD as well as a continuing growth in the encampment and the open space off of Huron by the, the water plant. And so, you know, I mentioned that because I think that at some level, it does get to be a public, um, health concern in my mind. Um, obviously, I, you know, it's unfortunate to see people experiencing homelessness, but trying to look at this holistically, I'm trying to understand, um, how we try to keep the camps from growing bigger, um, so that we don't see large encampments that could potentially be hotbeds for COVID or other issues. Um, and I know that some of our surrounding municipalities have different, um, avenues that are within, um, constitutional rights to, oh, you know, to deal with keeping encampments from growing inside their, their city. So I'm just curious, um, any input that you have on that. And it could be something for the PD, but I think it's something that we need to actually start putting some time into, um, because I am concerned about the amount of, um, instances I'm hearing of it, and, and making sure that not only are we trying to provide services and connecting these folks to, um, resources, but also, um, that over, overarching public safety for our residents that live in the city.
Thank you for that. And in fact, the, um, the photo on the very first slide was from, um, that encampment that you mentioned. Um, and so it is, it is startling to see, um, any type of camp in the suburbs. That's not what we're used to seeing. It's, it's not what we're comfortable with, and it shouldn't be what we're comfortable with. Um, it does, however, take time to get people into housing. Our surrounding jurisdictions, as I've had conversations with them, they are doing the same thing we are. They're letting people stay where they are to prevent the spread of COVID while they're working to connect them to housing. Unfortunately, connecting people to housing does take time. Um, we are racing against time for that, and we were, we are working actively to get people hotel stays, um, in a way that will help stabilize them and get them into permanent housing, making room for others to be able to move into the hotels and transition them out as quickly as possible as well.
That's good to hear, and I appreciate that context. I guess the one question I would ask you is, and it sounds like if I'm reading between the lines, you may be giving the answer. But, uh, so are we confident that the folks that we're seeing aren't the, you know, what would be classified as the shelter-resistant? It's more just, like you said, trying to find a place for them to stay. So these aren't, you know, folks that are choosing not to go somewhere else. It's just not available.
Right. We have had, um, we've had a handful of individuals who have refused services. Um, as long as they're not exhibiting behavioral problems, creating issues or public safety or health problems, then they are being allowed to stay. However, for the most part, those individuals are in fact, being asked to move along because they're most inevitably winding up with some level of behavioral, um, and public health issues at those sites. But yes, the others, in fact, we have, um, somewhere between ten to fifteen individuals who were staying in shelters in Denver. Um, but as the shelters started to close down at the National West Stock Show and the Coliseum, um, they moved back into Westminster.
Okay, great. And I, and I guess then, and again, this may be a question for the PD, but when you talk about the individuals that, you know, maybe they are asked to move along, are we confident that we have adequate, um, laws and, and ordinances on the book that are both constitutional, but also help us handle those situations in the city of Westminster?
And Counselor Demott, this is, uh, Jason Gank, uh, Parks, Recreation and Libraries Director. If I may, uh, we, we've been working hand-in-hand with our, with our police department to make sure that we have, uh, adequate policies and procedures in place. Uh, for example, uh, just, just recently, I want to say in the past year or two, we, we've made sure we're up to speed, uh, with how we're actually handling things like trespass, which is a, uh, policy that the, uh, Director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries, I have the ability to implement that. And we work hand-in-hand with the police to make sure we have the ability to implement. The, the challenge that we're struggling with right now, uh, typically, we have the ability, uh, to move on a trespass, uh, and we certainly can, and we do, when there's things like destruction of property or creating a, a public health, uh, concern. The challenge is really COVID. And with our guidance from the CDC and the, and I don't want to say the inability, but, 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 but there's that desire to not move folks because of spreading COVID is sort of where we're stuck. Uh, I will say that both the PD and then our navigator position, which is also relatively new, have been doing a great job in tracking and interacting and making sure we're understanding our data.
That's great. I, I appreciate those answers. And, uh, from Ms. Scarbeck, I appreciate all the work that I've seen you do over time. I know that, you know, this is, you put a lot of time and effort into, into your work, and I appreciate it. Um, but that's all the questions I have, and I think that's very thorough, and I'm comfortable with everything you're saying. So I appreciate all the work between all the departments on this.
Other comments from council? Miss Sykes?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, um, Ms. Scarbeck. This is a, a really thorough and, and helpful, um, report. Um, you mentioned that we haven't seen an uptick in homelessness, which is great news. Um, you, I, I was gonna ask you, ask you if you contemplate or predict, um, that as some of these, um, CARES dollars are no longer available, um, and some of the programs that are helping both landlords and renters and helping people hit their mortgages as, as they dry up, I, I'm nervous about a perfect storm of cold weather, less shelter beds, and more people on the streets. But perhaps, perhaps that last element is not something I need to worry about as much as I thought I did based off of this conversation.
I think I'll start, I, I'll, I'll start by answering that with, we can never thoroughly predict, predict the future. I think this year has more than proved that to all of us. Um, that said, we've got a lot of great people and a lot of great minds and caring hearts across the entire country, and certainly in the Denver metro area, working on that very issue. And, um, we can come, I can work with economic development in the housing division to come back to you with a, uh, more cohesive answer and more comprehensive answer surrounding what we are forecasting regarding evictions and, um, what the effects will be on homelessness for that. At this point, with the CDC recommendations to, on a nationwide level, for landlords to not evict for financial reasons, um, we are definitely on a pause, and that gives us a little bit more time to work things out.
Can someone refresh my memory? When does that expire?
December 31st of 2020, at this time.
All right. Well, thank you so much. If, um, you see a change in trends, I hope to hear from you. But thank you. This was very helpful.
You're welcome.
Other comments from council? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kate. Ms. Scarback, you've done a fabulous job. And I recently heard a similar presentation at the Jeffco Municipality, um, quarterly meeting. Um, they also reported on this. And, and the only thing that I would add is that, um, if, if residents do see, um, someone in need of assistance, um, you can always dial 211, and that will connect you to some services that will allow the individual to receive assistance. So, thank you again, Ms. Scarback. You've done just a fabulous job. You are, you are always right on top of this, and I appreciate that. Glad to hear the navigator is really helping things and working out. I know that's been a, a place of pride for Jeffco, for the Jeffco area. So, thank you.
Other comments from council?
Then I am going to turn it over to City Attorney David Frankel.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Scarback. Appreciate it. Um, members of council, uh, my contribution to the COVID update tonight is the monthly emergency declaration update. Uh, as you're aware, it's been six months since our emergency declaration went into effect. And, uh, during those six months, we have, uh, had the emergency declaration in place. We have been, uh, conducting council meetings remotely, which is, um, a code amendment that went into effect at the beginning of our emergency declaration, which contemplated, you know, the council could continue to meet to ensure continuity of operations for the city government. Uh, and we have been meeting, uh, essentially every Monday since then. Um, the most recent action that was taken, uh, relative to the emergency declaration was council's unanimous passage of Counselors Bill 27, and that occurred on August 24th. And that, uh, had the effect of extending the budget adoption deadline until November 30th. And so, um, my understanding is that will facilitate additional public input and additional gathering of, uh, financial data to help, uh, the city adopt its budget in the best practice, uh, possible. Um, the other effects of, uh, ongoing with regard to the emergency declaration, uh, continue to include the, uh, eligible, uh, reimbursement from FEMA for certain expenditures that the city is taking. continue to include the eligible reimbursement from FEMA for certain expenditures that the city is taking, which I believe will be facilitated by our emergency declaration. But if you have any other questions, I'm, I'm glad to field those now.
Mr. Frankel, not a question, but just an update. The Metro Mayor's organization has forwarded a request to our federal legislators that went out today to support the extension of the reporting period for our CARES dollars beyond the end of this year, because so many communities across the country are trying to get all this in and trying to get these funds expended. We are hoping to hear something back within the next few weeks, depending on what actions, actions are taken by the federal legislators. But that letter has gone out, and that was, went out from all the mayors in the metro area.
Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. And what I did not list for council's benefit in my emergency declaration update was particularly all the CARES Act funding that we have been putting to good use for our community. Just on the rationale that obviously that the CARES Act expenditures are governed by federal law and not necessarily driven by our local emergency declaration. But absolutely, staff is working to develop programs to ensure that our residents have the benefit, the maximum benefit of all the CARES Act funding that we can obtain for our city.
Any comments or questions from council for Mr. Frankel? All right, seeing none. Mr. Tripp, does this end the COVID update?
It does, Mr. Mayor. Thank you and thank your counselors for their attention and support this evening.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business of the council for tonight. We have one item remaining. This is an executive session. Since we've been at this for three hours now, I'm going to go ahead and call for a short break. We will reconvene at nine fifty-five in your new setting. This time, I would ask the council to go ahead, and we will go through the process of, Mr. Frankel, would you identify the request for the executive session that we will need to go into later?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I can read you the title now or at nine fifty-five, whichever you prefer.
Let's just go ahead and do it, and we'll come back and go directly into the executive session then.
Of course. The second executive session for this evening that's proposed is to discuss personnel matter that presiding judge's performance evaluation pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code Section one eleven-three C one and Colorado Revise Statute twenty-four six four oh two four F.
As identified by the city attorney, we have a request for an executive session on a personnel matter, which we will conclude with tonight. And at this time, I will confirm that all members of council are prepared to go into executive session upon return from our break. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Air Force Tim Seitz? Counselor Bowles?
Yes.
Counselor Demott? Yeah, Counselor Demott?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
All right. At this time, we will take a short recess. Again, we will return at nine fifty-five in the new setting. So counsel, remember you need to log out of this and then log in with your new password into the executive session. We will see everyone back here at nine fifty-five. We are adjourned for the evening, ladies.